Hi, welcome to the Village of Buchanan July 20, 2021 meeting. According to CDC and New York State regulations, anyone entering the building must show proof of vaccination. If you do not feel comfortable showing proof, I'm talking to our audience here, or have not been vaccinated, you must wear a mask. So you can also see us live on Facebook. And Cindy, the number to call in for questions or comments would be 737-1034. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in my nation's hands under my God, in the visible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay. So Marcus, this special, the special meeting has been advertised and also what we're, what the agenda is this evening has been advertised.
That's correct.
So first thing on the agenda is a resolution ratifying the Village of Buchanan in joining the town of Cortland, Hendrick Hudson's High School District, and the county of Westchester in a petition to review the denial of the party's motion to intervene in authorizing payment of legal fees to the law firm of Sieve Padgett and Rizel, the law firm chosen to represent the party. So I believe that the resolution here explains everything in detail. So I'll read this first. Whereas on March 5, 2021, the village became aware that discussions had been held with the town of Cortland with respect to the filing of a petition to review the recent denial of the party's motion to intervene with respect to the license transfer from Entergy to Holtek, and that said petition would be filed, was in fact filed that very day in the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit without naming the village as a party. And whereas upon learning about the filing of the petition to review the denial of the motion to intervene, the village attorney immediately contacted counsel for the law firm of Sieve Padgett and Rizel to inquire as to why the village had not been given advance notice and relayed the information to the village board of trustees, stressing that if the village wished to join the appeal, this matter, this matter had to be discussed and decided prior to March 14, and that therefore this matter was urgent. Whereas a special meeting for advice of counsel was held on March 11, 2021 via Zoom, wherein a decision was made to authorize the law firm of Sieve Padgett and Rizel to add the Village of Buchanan as a party of the petition for review, which necessarily involved paying the village, one, village's one-third share of legal fees associated with moving that matter forward. And whereas due to an oversight when the village board came out of an advice of counsel session, it failed to put its decision on the record publicly. And whereas the village may ratify acts of public officials for acts that could have been authorized in the first place, now be it therefore resolved that the village board hereby formally ratifies its decision to join in the petition to review and authorize, authorizes payment to the firm of Sieve, I guess, Padgett and Rizel for its legal service with respect to the same. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be effective immediately. So this is about our, when we intervened with the sale of Entergy to Holtek, and there was an oversight. So we are ratifying that decision this evening. On a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
This resolution states that there was a meeting held on March 11. However, there are no minutes, there's no agenda, there's, was no notification of a meeting, there's no record of this meeting. So how would anybody be able to view what was discussed at, at the meeting, and how a decision came about, and whether there was a budget amount set or any information whatsoever?
This, I think it's had in here that there was a special meeting because we had to make a decision whether we were going to be involved to continue. So there was, there was a special meeting. I, I don't know, I don't have that in front of me right now, honestly.
There's, I went through the website.
Okay.
I, I looked at all of the information that we have on our website. I didn't see an advertisement for minutes, supporting documents. There, there didn't appear to be anything that would even state it. I remember I had asked a month or two ago, and there was a little bit of a foggy recollection, but there has to be something that says
Okay.
To the, to substance of the meeting, a budget item, a amount, a maximum amount, what parts of the appeal, or what parts of the intervention that we were appealing? Because the, the commission almost found in favor of the interveners by a three to two margin. And I was just wondering what was discussed, you know, there has to be some, has to be some record of a meeting.
Okay, this was a special meeting for advice of counsel.
So a decision was, a decision was made by a quorum of the board, a majority of the board, to move forward to expend public funds in a legal action. There has to be some type of, of record of that. Something had to be voted on, or there had to be a meeting of the minds of the people who can allocate funds and enter a lawsuit on behalf of the village.
Stephanie, would you like to comment on this? Because you were very, very closely involved in this.
Yes, and that was the mistake that was made because after the meeting, nobody came out of the meeting and put on the record that you guys had voted to join in what we called the appeal, but it was, the technical term was, let me see, let's look, in a petition to review the denial. So that's the technical term. It was the appeal. They denied our motion to intervene. And we found out we had it very late. And so that's what, that's the mistake that was made, is we didn't go out in public, which is what Trustee Murray is asking about, which we're in public now. So he wants you to discuss, you know, why you decided to, I mean, I'm not sure what question.
Well, the, the question is, is that there has to be a record of a meeting, there has to be minutes of the meeting, who attended, how much money was authorized to be dispersed. There has to be some kind of, of record. Right now, there is no records that are retrievable that this meeting ever occurred. You know, I'm, I'm sure that it did, but you know, I don't see how any funds could have been expended. I don't see how any action could be taken if there's no record of it. You know, this is several months later, and we're, I'm, I'm sure what you guys said happened, happened, but there's, there's, there's no records. I, I don't see how we can even pass an audit by saying, hey, we expended an extra $25,000. Well, who authorized it? And you don't have anything except a resolution from, you know, five months later or four months later. So.
Well, it was an executive session being regarded, the leading counsel and pretty much a meeting that we had to call in a timely fashion because of the, the time constraint to join that lawsuit, that intervention. So I don't have any records myself.
So Nick, the open-
I remember we had the meeting, but I don't have the specific record of it.
So the open meeting law does allow for a meeting to be held within the 72-hour timeframe or any timeframe if the matter is deemed necessary for, for a proper function of the village. Okay? However, when an action is to be taken and a decision is made, especially to expend public funds, a record of that meeting shall be taken, as well as minutes be available within two weeks of that formal action decided within executive session. And that's directly from the open meetings law of New York.
Yeah. I only remember that we had agreed to hire this firm, and that we, the intent was to be part of that joint intervention. And the fact that, was it, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, was it the town attorney that somehow or other took us off there? But how did we wind up not being on that paperwork?
Well, apparently there was a misunderstanding between the, the firm hired and the town of Cortland, the attorney for the firm, who's Dan Rizel, who's, is our contact, understood that the town of Cortland was relaying all of the necessary information to the village. And I don't know where that understanding came, and I was quite upset about it, because we never authorized that you could give, you know, you could run everything through the town. But in any event, there was an email that came through one morning, and it said, whatever, Stephanie, hey, you've been really quiet. It's not like you. Give me a call. So I called, and he said, oh, you didn't want to join in, you know, can you tell me why you didn't want to join? It's the first time I heard that there was an appeal or the, the petition to review, at which point he said, you know, he apologized, I'm really sorry, I thought you were getting everything through the town, and you have to act really quickly because there's only a limited amount of time where we can answer to the caption. That's how this came apart about. And I think what Sean is referring to is, he's correct. When we came out of executive session, there had to be minutes, right? And that's what we're ratifying because we didn't do that. So he cannot find any record because we didn't do it. And that was the error. And so what we're trying to do tonight is put it on the record and ratify the fact that you had a meeting, you made a mistake, you didn't come out and have, you know, put it on the record. So you're doing that tonight.
Right. Yeah.
It was an oversight, it was a mistake, it should not have happened that way. We should have come out, there should have been a record made of that decision and what you decided, which is what you're doing now.
So do you guys actually, do any of the other trustees who are at the meeting, remember the substance of the discussions? Were you discussing appealing all of the decisions or all of the contentions that were set forth in the original authorization?
I remember that the, the purpose was to get a seat at the table. And I understand what you're saying, and maybe the proper procedures weren't there, but we wound up getting, we saving the village a lot, a lot of money. And yes, the expenditure is, is what it is there, but we got, got 1.2 million from Holtek.
Well, I can appreciate that. I, I just think there's some material discrepancies in the, in the paperwork, especially where it states that the Village of Buchanan receives $3.5 million, or 47% of its annual budget in the paperwork of the appeal, as well as the original intervener paperwork. I was just wondering where that figure came from. Did we actually receive 3.5 million or no?
From whom?
It says in the, the petitioner states that he, the Village of Buchanan will lose 3.5 million in revenue.
Yeah, I'm asking you, who, who are you talking about getting the 3.5 million from?
The Village of Buchanan was, was receiving it from Entergy. I don't believe that that's correct. So there are material-
I'd agree with you, right? I, I don't think we're going to argue with you that you, that, that, you know, there was mistakes made here and said, but the overall, overall thing is, is I mean, look, and we could talk this thing to death, but the, the overall thing, there was a great benefit to the village. And yes, the procedure not exactly gone down the right road, you're right. Okay. But overall effect is, so let's move on.
Okay, I, I just have one last question. There are a lot of things that were in the appeal, as well as the original intervention. There's a, a lot of things, not just taxes. And since we're no longer appealing, I was wondering how all of the contentions, how everybody's concerns were taken care of. You know, there was no real action taken besides the, the new pilot, as well as some other stipulations to the PSC, but a lot of the material facts that were sworn to by the people who voted for the intervention are still occurring. So I was just curious, what has changed materially in the agreements since the intervention and the appeal of the intervention was authorized?
Sean, first of all, this happened in March. The original goal was to have a seat at the table. So I know at one point you had said something to the effect that the village shouldn't have been in it, we shouldn't have been an intervener, we had no business being in on that. There, the goal was-
May I, may I interrupt? What Sean said was that, that, that we shouldn't be trying to block the sale, which is not at all what we were trying to do. The point is, we were trying to get the best deal for the village by getting our, our interests met. And, and Sean, in the middle of his campaign, said that what we were doing was trying to block the transfer, furthest thing from the truth. So Sean, where, where are you going with this? What is he going to do?
Well, no, I'm just, I'm, I would like, maybe Stephanie could help me out. Stephanie, what would have happened if the commission found three to two in the Village of Buchanan's favor, instead of the opposite?
Stephanie, you have the muted staff.
Sorry, you mean to, I, I'm not sure what you're asking.
If, if the commission-
If we didn't have to review the denial, you mean if they had-
No, no, no.
-allowed us to intervene?
No, there seems to be, at least now I have a little confusion. If the commission would have found in the Village of Buchanan's favor, what would have happened at the end of May with the license transfer?
Commission? Oh, well, what we were doing was intervening because we wanted to be heard. You mean if they had said, you know what, you're right, you can be an intervener-
That's correct.
-rather than denying us, allowing to intervene?
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if they would have found that our petition that we swore to in court was a valid petition, and that they would accept our rationale for the intervention, what would have happened?
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. So if we were allowed to intervene, what was the position that was being-
Yeah, what would have happened in May? What would the license-
-by the village, the town, and the school district?
Yeah, would the license have been transferred out? Yeah, would the license have been transferred?
Well, we don't know, but we were, our position originally was, yes, we were against the license transfer because we felt there wasn't enough discovery. We were looking for all kinds of background information about the proposed transfer fee.
So-
So, yeah, we would have been intervening, and we would have moved to purportedly attempt to block the sale. So you're not completely wrong.
Yes.
But what we were really looking for is saying, look, they allowed this too soon.
Yeah, so-
You need a lot more information that we weren't given.
So what would, the, the chain of events that would have occurred if the commission found in our favor was that the license transfer would have been blocked until all of the contentions were heard, satisfied, and then the decision on the individual contentions would have had to have been then decided again by the commission? So a successful intervention at that point-
Correct.
...would have blocked the sale of the plant. Correct?
Well, for the immediate future, yes.
That's correct.
Until it moved forward.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
The main purpose of this, and, and that's why these attorneys wrote this up, it was to have a seat at the table. It was a strategy. It wasn't to block the sale in the end. It was a strategy to have a seat at the table. That's, that's all we were doing. Because we did not have a seat at the table when the state, Entergy, and Riverkeeper were involved in those negotiations. So that wasn't fair that the host community wasn't being involved. So my board felt that it was very, very important for us to be there to make that decision. I believe in Plymouth, Massachusetts, don't quote me, one community, the settlement was when the, the sale went through, is Holtek offered them trees. And I knew, we knew, that we needed a lot more than trees with this, with this new owner. So it was always about a strategy. You know, you can pick whatever, the Rizel Law Firm, whatever their strategy was, whatever we went into this, you can pick that all apart. It was, the bottom line is we needed to negotiate something much better than we were going to get, because we were getting nothing, nothing at all. So we were able to, because, and this is why, this was moving very fast at this point, because the Attorney General had joined in. And so we had leverage at this point with the final negotiations because the Attorney General was involved. So that's another big piece of why we were able to get the things we got, the 1.2 million for next year's budget. So next year's budget is, that's pretty solid, having that in there. As you know, we're going, we have started negotiations with Holtek. They're going to be difficult negotiations. So, but for next year's budget, we have the 1.2 million. One of the things that was very important that we also got in that agreement was the early release of the property. There has been discussions already. Last year, representatives of Holtek came to see me here at Village Hall, and we had a really nice discussion on what the village needs and why we need to have that property released for our tax base. So they're open to that conversation, but it's also in this agreement. And also, there'll be a conversation about damage of roads, to repair the roads. That's going to be a little trickier, but, you know, so those are the three big things that we got in that settlement. And that's, it was a strategy. It was about getting something out of that sale and having a seat at the table so that we didn't-
Lost the volume there?
We didn't just get trees.
Yeah, I can't hear.
You can't hear?
Can, can you hear me, Nick? Are you, you?
Modern technology.
But, but Teresa, you got cut off there.
Oh, who did that? Okay. And that's, and that's why, how this all came about. I wasn't prepared to discuss this whole thing. We were just, if this was something legal to do at the time, I just feel that, you know, to ratify it, to correct that mistake. And I know other administrations have also ratified decisions after, because there was some type of an error made.
No, I understand, and I do appreciate that. And I understand the, the differences when it, when it comes to trying to negotiate things. And, and it's, I just find it difficult to even discuss a resolution when there's no official record of, of what transpired, let alone, you know, what the debate was, what the budget lines were. And, you know, it's, it's virtually impossible for, for me to even, you know, I, I would have to abstain from this the same way I abstained from the, the minutes of the March meeting when I wasn't in attendance, or the April minutes. But even though I was able to watch the March and April meetings, I would understand what transpired and be able to report on its accuracy. This would be very difficult, especially since it doesn't seem like the board members even have any notes. So, you know.
Well, I don't, I wasn't prepared to discuss that in detail.
That's fine.
Yeah. This was a meeting, a special meeting that was set up for advice of counsel. So Stephanie was advising us on what was happening at the time. So we needed to have a decision by, what was it, March 14, Stephanie? So unfortunately, there wasn't a meeting in between that time where we could have discussed it. So it was Stephanie giving us some advice, discussing the situation where we were with us, with that. And really, it was actually a continuation of the intervention. Even though we did lose the first phase of that, it was a discussion about whether really to continue or what we should do. Did we still want to be part, in, part of the intervention of this?
That's fine. No, I appreciate that. I was just-
May I, may I ask this? The, the date of this special meeting was the March, was March 11?
March.
It was, yes, March 11 via Zoom, because we were in the heat of the battle with COVID at that point.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to remember, but I'm thinking that this was like a very, an early meeting, because I, I do have notes from March 11 for, for an LWRP meeting, which would normally have been at seven o'clock, I believe. And then, so I, I seem to remember that this was, there's something that we, we, because, as you said, it was an advice of counsel meeting. I think we might have done it at like a six o'clock or something? I'm trying to remember. I, I do not have notes.
5:30.
Um, what was it?
5:30.
It was at 5:30 PM.
Okay. Right. And I was probably, wanted to eat dinner, and was, and was quite pissed off that we were having a meeting anyway.
I just have one more question. I just wanted, I just wanted, do the, the board members who voted for that, do they still believe that the contentions are still an issue that were in the original petition as well as the appeal? Do you still feel that that's an issue?
Sean?
No, I feel it worked out well.
I, I think it worked out well.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're hashing out something that no one was prepared to talk about from March. We're discussing on, are we going to vote for this so that we can ratify the decision that was made and pay the bills? Because, Marcus, where are we now? What's it, like 40, $45,000? That will be the final bill to get 1.2 million. So yes, there was an error made. If we were in the room when we closed the executive session, we would have made the announcement. But Zoom, Marcus has told us he can't get people back in. So that's a whole nother issue. So we didn't do anything illegal, Sean?
Well, I'm sure-
There was a strategy, there was a strategy so we can talk about the contentions. It was a strategy. That's all it was, was a strategy. We wanted a seat at the table. We didn't want to be left out again.
No, I understand, and I appreciate that.
Because I will tell you this, with the sale, with Entergy, the closure of Entergy, and having Riverkeeper there, and the governor, if the Village of Buchanan was there, that settlement would, would have been much, much different. But we had no say. So after that happened, we all agreed like, hey, the next thing, we have to have a seat at the table. We have to have a say. And going back to the place that just got trees, no, trees weren't going to cut it. We needed a lot more out of this.
No, I appreciate that. So what you're saying is, the, the contentions that were voted on in, what was it, July, July 23, that they're, they're no longer a valid contend, that all the fears have been taken care of? No, because it's just the same paper. It's just, the one you guys did in July is the same as the ones in February is the one same in March. If-
I, yeah.
Look, first of all, we, none of us expected that, that inadvertently, we had been taken off the paperwork. So it was sort of like, you know, well, duh, of course, we, we intended to be part of this, and we still want to be part of it. I don't remember what, any, about any specific vote, but, but it was certainly, we were like shocked that it even came up. So can we move on to the-
Yeah, okay, you know.
-Indian Point parcel? Do we have to discuss this any further, or can we move on?
Be my guest, Nick.
I wish I had everything in front of me to get, discuss it further, but that was-
If we're voting on this, can we please take a vote?
Yeah, so on a question, we got to, on a question. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, so, the main reason of this meeting this evening, we're discussing the redevelopment of the Indian Point property and the board's interest in rezoning the property. And this Indian Point development is very important to the Village of Buchanan. There's potential of 240 acres to be redeveloped, not all at once. You know, there's a section that, where the power plants are now, will not be developed for many, many years until the decommissioning is finished. It's important to us, our tax base, for what we've lost with the closure of Indian Point. And it's our one chance to get this right, to reinvent the village. So this is an exciting time for us, the redevelopment of that property. So we're, we're just beginning the work on that. And like I said a few minutes before, I have had discussions with Holtek already about releasing property that they don't need. So those discussions will continue. What I found interesting, the town of Cortland and the Village of Buchanan were, had a joint grant for the LWRP. And I know Rich is always saying, you know, you know, to always spell these things out. So it's the local waterfront redevelopment. And they did a survey, which was really interesting. And unfortunately, only 99 Buchanan residents responded. But some of the things were, were interesting that people came up with. One was a pier. I know Deb Malone from the Chamber of Commerce mentioned something about a conference center, housing, commercial, marina. And, and my, my personal thoughts, I'd like to see something mixed use, the best and highest use on that property. I'm not looking, and this is just me, you know, the, all the other board members will have different opinions. I'm not looking to do industrial. I think that Port Cortland would have been not a good thing for the village. But that's just me. I think we need to get away from industrial. My original thought with the 60 acres is maybe some housing there, maybe some, possibly a marina. And then whoever develops that property, we can have discussions with them to renovate our, our Lenz Cove. So, you know, those could be some discussions had there. There was also, I know, at the beginning, when the plant was announced closed, I met with some of the environmental groups, and they were just doing a happy dance about putting all solar panels there. And I don't think that's the best use there. If you go to upstate New York, a lot of the farms have solar panels. And I forget, I think it was eight or $9,000 an acre they were getting for having solar panels. I'm not totally against solar panels, just like the sheet rock plant there, they put them on top of their buildings. So, you know, that has a possibility there. But to cover the whole land in solar panels, I just don't think that's a good use of that beautiful land. And so this evening, we are going to have Behan Planning and Design here to have a discussion with us. Now, these were the same people with the LWRP. And so-
Maybe, Nick, maybe you want-
Yeah, Nick, if you'd like, because Nick was our liaison, the village board liaison with the LWRP.
Nick, maybe you want to introduce John, and how, you know, how you worked with him?
Oh, well, I, I, very, the Behan and John and the- Oh, well, very, Behan and John and the other people who worked with him, very knowledgeable, very professional, very helpful. I can only say positive things about them. What we've got here is a pretty tricky thing, that I, you know, we definitely need somebody like that to advise us and to kind of lead us through this, because there are so many questions. I mean, we have, and I think there's a time factor here also. You know, we have a parcel that doesn't belong to us, it belongs to Holtech. We don't know if, when, when and if Holtech is going to release that parcel to somebody. We don't know who they're talking to already. We do have an idea from that, from, you know, just general discussion and from the LWRP survey. We do have an idea of what we'd like to see, but I think we need to hone it a lot, you know, and I have proposed a rezoning of that parcel, but, you know, I will let the professional planners seem to feel that maybe we should do a plan for the whole Indian Point parcel. And, you know, there's, I mean, there's the nuclear storage casks that are a question, how close to those can you get from the survey, and also from a survey we did when we were doing a review of our master plan to revise it, that kind of fell apart, but we actually did conduct a survey a couple, about three, four years ago for that. And, you know, walkability and river access was one of the top five things that residents wanted, and that was Buchanan residents only responded. You know, so in general, we know that people want access to the river, they want open space. People also do want to have some kind of balance in terms of tax revenue coming in. So how we create a wedding between some development and the public's desire to have open and public space by the river, that wedding is, you know, let's consider the planners here to be the marriage counselors for that wedding. But no, but I think you're only, I'm talking a lot, I think you were just asking me about John, and is John here? John should be online with us?
I'm here. Hi, Nick.
Hi, John. John, yeah, but, yeah, what is the, were you going to sort of give some of your ideas tonight, John? I don't know exactly where we're at with, unless you and Marcus have spoken. I know we were talking about the possibility of you leading us through this, and where are we at with that?
Sure, sure. No, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me at your meeting. I very much appreciate it. So, and thanks for the nice compliment. I appreciate that, Nick. And we've been working, we've been working with the village for the past, I think, year and a half now, right? So when we were selected by the town and village to help prepare, as the mayor said, the local waterfront revitalization program, right, which is a joint project between the town and the village, and we helped conduct or set up that survey of the residents, and we've gotten to know your community quite a bit better. And we're really in the status now of having that program, that plan, we're going to be, you know, kind of putting together the draft very soon. That's going to be, our goal was to have that out for the committee review and right after Labor Day. And so I think you are appropriately recognizing the need to look at the zoning for the property, looking ahead. The zoning, the industrial zoning that exists now allows for a lot of uses that seem to be in conflict with what we're hearing to be that kind of community vision for that area. The area north of the plant right is wooded, it's kind of untouched, right? It's got ponds, it's got riverfront, it butts Lutz Cove, Lutz Cove Park. And so it's really, I think it's really important to, you know, to take a look at the zoning and make some changes now. I just, a little bit about our company. We've been a business for 29 years. I myself have been working in the Hudson Valley for 37 years. We've done work up and down, you know, local waterfront revitalization planning. We've been involved in work from Buffalo, Lake Erie revitalizing work out there, Niagara Falls, Niagara County, over across the state, to Erie Canal communities, up in War Town, along the Black River, up in, up in Pot Dam on the Racket River, over on Plattsburgh on Lake Champlain, in the Hudson Valley, you know, we've worked, we just finished an out local program in Marlboro in Oster County, and we're, we've done zoning work for several, many, many communities, including, we rewrote the zoning for the entire zoning code a few years ago for the Village of Reinbeck. We did a local waterfront program and zoning for the village and town of Pittsburgh, which are really nice towns on the Erie Canal and the Rochester area. We did zoning code, zoning for the town of Walkeville in Orange County, and town of Clarkstown in Rockland County, and up and down, really, I would say we've probably done over 100 projects for municipalities, municipalities across the state. And so, you know, our work on zoning includes, you know, we've been doing this quite a while, and I think we pride ourselves on our creative approach. And one thing that we, we don't do is what a lot of people are tempted to do, which is just photocopy or scan or download a copy of someone else's zoning, and then try, then edit that. Because what I found is that zoning is really a very important tool that guides land uses, and when somebody does that, they're really just not thinking hard enough about what the community wants and how to write it. So when we do zoning, we write it custom for the community. In other words, we write the code so that it's designed to help create a setting where you'll get, you incentivize the projects that you want to have, and you'll discourage and prohibit the kind of projects and proposals you jump on a half. I put that in simple terms. So we've written incentive zoning, we've written code for mixed-use zoning districts, conservation subdivision regulations, design guidelines, form-based code, and everything else in between. We've also written zoning codes in Burlington, Vermont, and Massachusetts, and New Hampshire. So I think we have a pretty good grasp on zoning. But I would add that we're not attorneys, so our work though is, on the creative side, and we always have worked with a village attorney or town attorney in terms of, you know, final review, legal review, and adoption, the whole adoption process. And so with that, kind of as an introduction to us, we put together a proposal that would help the village update and create and amend the zoning, your village zoning ordinance and your village code. And there's a six-step, you know, kind of plan we put together, which would include, you know, preparing a zoning district map. It looks like the zoning map that I've seen the village is pretty old. The one in the code book anyways on a day, we would, you know, create a digital map for you of the districts. We would draft, do a complete rewrite of the section, especially focusing on the nonessential properties associated with the power plant. We would draft, create modifications to permitted uses. We work with you to create uses that will advance your goals of incentivizing economic development in a way that fits your vision for the future and helps add to your assets and your tax base of the village, right? And we'll get to some of the nitty-gritty, some of the zoning definitions. We'll describe design guidelines in the narrative sense. I don't, I was originally thinking we would provide illustrated guidelines, but I want to try to keep the costs down for you. And other parts of the zone, you know, the area, boat requirements. I do want your board to consider incentive zoning, and this is a great tool. I can, we'll talk about it, we can talk about it more, but essentially what it is, is it's where a community receives amenities from the development process that might be publicly accessible and maintain open space, it might be some public infrastructure improvements, it might be a range of things that advance the village goals, while at the same time providing an incentive for a private applicant to get some zoning flexibility, maybe some increased density, or some additional land uses. I think that's a really important tool here in particular, so that the village is careful not to lose its leverage, if you would, right, in the land use decision-making that you have. And we could talk more about that when you get into, we get into the project if you want us to work with you. And I'm going to take it through the draft code and really the whole adoption process. We're very familiar with the Environmental Seeker, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I've, you know, been, you know, working with projects on that, on that act for many years. In fact, I lectured at the Albany Law School on creative uses of the Seeker regulations. And so we've provided a, like I said, a scope of work. We were here, this would be the kind of an outgrowth of our work with the village, as I said, with the local waterfront revitalization program. We would do the work on an hourly basis. We provided hourly billing rates and a letter proposal that was sent to the village administrator. And I still, we recommend an initial budget as well, which is also in our proposal, $25,000 for this effort. And now, I guess with that, I want to let you know too, that zoning, this could become much, I'm trying to keep it simple so that you can have zoning in place. That's my goal, to get you some new zoning in place. Ultimately, as Nick said, we would recommend the village participate in, or perhaps lead a more focused, like master planning process. I think ultimately, especially because of the opportunities that, what's called the nonessential utility property holds, that you really want to take a closer look than what is done typically in the zoning ordinance. But that would take more time, more money, we'd want to work with you to find some grants for that, or see if the property owner, Holtech, if you would, would perhaps participate in that. Just one side note too, we, I have a lot of experience, interestingly, working with utility companies on nonessential property dispositions. The firm I was formerly partner in, we developed a program for National Grid, Niagara Molar Corporation, helping them review and evaluate, and help them set up a, basically a development company to manage and develop their nonessential properties, which was 70,000 acres of land across upstate New York. And so, and we did some really, really great stuff with them. We created industrial parks, we created residential subdivision, we created large greenway corridors. In fact, in the Hudson River, up in the Adirondacks and current in Lake Luzerne, we, the company set aside 17 miles of riverfront as open space. And I'm really, that's why I'm very proud of that, that work with the utility company. And we also, interestingly, made money for the utility company, the shareholders as well, doing, I think, some good work. So anyway, that's maybe too many words for you, thank you. Thank you for listening, but I'd love to have, share any questions or thoughts or observations, and just, they may, that list of uses I think are all interesting and within a zoning update.
Can I ask a question on the present zoning for where the nuclear waste is stored, is for peaceful nuclear energy? If that zoning is not changed, can they then decide to say, well, you're just going to keep this here forever?
So.
Another way to put it is, how important is it to change that so that we can get stopped with it?
Well, I'm, no, right.
Restock.
It's an interesting question. I would certainly want to explore that with you and the attorney.
Rich, we have that, we have that waste until the Department of Energy decides to remove it. That's an agreement that was made many years ago, so it's on them to find a final repository or an interim, so until that all happens.
And if I could also add, the parcels that are more time-sensitive are the ones that could be sold off even when the decommissioning isn't completed, you know, so I'm sure there are going to be people approaching Holtech like, wow, we could do whatever it is they want to do, whether they want to do solar panels, a factory, a convention center, you know, anybody could approach Holtech to purchase that northern parcel. And so it's those vacant parcels that are more time-sensitive. You know, that's, the parcel that currently has the reactor domes and the stored waste, that's going to be, that's going to be a long-term thing. Something could happen sooner on the currently undeveloped parcels. That's, I think that's more important. I'd deal with that in a time-sensitive way right now.
Was that, that's an M2 zone? Is that correct? I forgot, is that M1 or M2?
All M2, yeah.
It's all M2. So M2 has a lot of other permitted uses other than the peaceful use of atomic energy. There's several things in the M2 zone. You could actually, everything in the M1 is also applicable to the M2, and there's extra things that are permitted by special use permit. So I don't believe the M2 is strictly for peaceful use of atomic energy. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nick. I don't, I didn't read it lately, but.
No, you're right. You're right. There are some other uses in M1, you know, which include things like gas stations and repair shops. It's nothing terribly insightful, and I think what we have to do now is have a little bit more vision for that property than what the current code shows. But you're right, there are other things that, you know, the M2 does say, it says sheet rock manufacturing and peaceful use of atomic energy, and everything that's currently allowed in M1, which is the lighter industrial area. But what we want to do there should take us a good bit further for both of those, M1 and 2 currently.
I just want everybody to realize that there are more uses than just that one thing in M2.
Yeah, good point.
Any other?
John, can I ask you something?
Sure.
I always feel like developers would be salivating over this property, and I'm trying to, you know, while I understand the purpose of incentive zoning, you know, I feel like, I feel like there's so much incentive for that property on the Hudson for certain developers that, do you think that incentive zoning would be advantageous, the same way as it might be in a blighted downtown, where you're trying to get somebody to make improvements or something?
I do, I do. I think the village is limited to what you can require in terms of public benefit without incentive zoning. All right, and so I think the main reason would be to secure public benefits beyond what could normally secure.
So John, that incentive zoning could potentially be the redevelopment of the Lenz Cove Park? You know, would that be something that could be discussed? I mean, that's something we would like to discuss. If somebody does develop.
I would say this is, this zoning that I'm thinking for, which that we would write with you and for you, would become the, really the framework, right, for what happens. It may not be, you end up, and I think realistically, there would be another level of plan and master planning, development, and zoning applications, the refinement, but it would set the rules, and right now, you really, you really don't have very many tools at all, right? Somebody, uh, not that would happen, but uh, you're, you're, the way it's set up now, it maximize your values at all. Got nothing in there, uh, I'm going to put this, um, I think this will be a big step forward. I think the vision is probably important, and I think uh this would help with that. We were writing it a way that it's provides some flexibility too, right, so uh you can respond and react and uh consider proposals, right, that are beneficial to the village. But right, right now, uh, you know, right now, you're at a position.
So, is, for this proposal that you've given us for the, was it $21,000, we would, $25,000, $25,000 budget, does this include the entire zoning recommendations for the entire 240 acres, or is it just a proposal for the area between the owner-controlled area and Lenz Cove, which includes the man-made lake with the dam?
I think we would focus on the uh, on the area.
You're breaking up.
Plan. Can you hear me okay?
No.
You were just breaking up, John.
Okay. I see they have a, not a great connection. Uh, we would, we would focus on the area north of Lenz Cove and we could cover those areas, we would, the rest of this uh non-essential property? Did you hear me okay?
So, the, so this proposal will just be for the development of the land between the owner-controlled area and the, our Lenz Cove Park, is that correct?
That would be the main focus, yes.
Okay.
Which we can refer to as parcel B from the DL English report, just for convenience, we could refer to that as parcel B.
Parcel.
Yeah.
Oh, we could say it's the northern parcel of the property too.
And that's 60 acres?
And, yeah.
Is that 60 acres?
Yeah, it's about, it's about 60 acres, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we all know the terrain is, is on the rocky side, we've walked that before, but it's beautiful on the Hudson River. And Sean, you said that's a man-made dam over there, because I've seen that dam.
That's correct.
It is.
It's man-made.
Okay, all right.
The spillway has fallen apart and it's eroding the entire hill.
Oh, all right.
So, me and the kids go back there, they like looking at the frogs.
Oh, okay. Good place to get frogs.
We haven't been, we haven't since we put, the energy put up the signs.
Oh, okay. Um, so one of the things I, I know um trustee Murray had asked too, I think it was at the last meeting, about putting out an RFP for potential interest in, for the developers?
Well, what I had suggested that we come, what my suggestion was, was that we come to an understanding that, hey, we're, we're not professional developers, we're not, the Village Buchanan since the eighties has had an extremely difficult time developing our parcels in that area, even with grant money, going back all the way to the early eighties. Uh, what I had suggested was that we come up with a formula for, what it sounds like is partially what you're talking about, the incentive zoning, where we would have a formula of development of, say, 40% commercial, 35% residential and 25% public access, and set those parameters and have developers come to us with ideas and plans, and then we would tailor the zoning to the plans that we like. Uh, I realize that that could be taking a risk, because if that property is not sold prior to the zoning change, the person who buys it would still have the as-of-rate development as per the zoning that was in place at the time. So, the issue that I'm having here is we're becoming too specific in creating a zone where we don't even know if it would work for a developer, number one, and number two, we would probably have to redo it in according to what his requirements would be and cost-benefit analysis on his part. So, the incentive zoning that I would like to see is a formula of a mixed commercial, mixed residential, a mixed public access, so everybody can benefit, our taxpayers can benefit as well as our residents. So, I don't know, is that something that you can consider, or would the rest of the board like to consider that? As I know, Nick, you were vehemently against that when I had discussed it before.
Well, I, you know, you, you, if you tailor the zoning to a proposal that you like, there's no guarantee that that person is going to be the one that buys the parcel from Holtec. First, that's one point. Um, I, I think I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how well that would work. I think my personal percentages would be a little different than yours, but, but I don't know, maybe, John, what do you think of that?
I think it's about, I think what's most important, can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
But I think, I'd say what's most.
Oh, lost you.
I think it's really important for the village.
John, you're cutting out.
Yeah, um, let me see here. I might turn my video off to uh, it might come in.
Who's that guy?
Ah, yeah, right. So, so I was, uh, the village, um, for the village to lead the process and uh, uh, the councilman Murray?
Yeah, he's still breaking up, John.
Not now. I don't know why I'm plugged in. Let's see. Can you hear me now or not?
Well, I hear you, I hear, we hear you when you say that, but then intermittently you break up.
All right. Um.
Technology.
Okay.
We'll try again.
All right, I uh.
Tell your kids to get off the wifi.
I may, I may phone in if this still, if this still happening.
Well, try it again, right now I hear you.
Hey, John, if you like, you can call me on my cellphone, I can put you onto the mic, if that's easier for you.
All right, all right, we just, that's fine, I'll do that.
Okay, call, call me.
It lasted mostly.
One of the other added benefits of using that formula is that the developer would be the one that would bear the brunt of the costs. He would have to develop the project, he would have to come up with the tabulations, and we would, we would uh review them and ask him for changes, you know? If we're going to basically dictate through a zoning code what the permitted use would be and the special use permit, we're essentially drawing the plans for the developer. I, I kind of like to put the onus on the people who are requesting something from the village, and then we evaluate that, whether to approve it or not approve it. We wouldn't have to do it twice.
I kind of see your point, but I'm not sure I agree because.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I don't think, I don't think we have, yes, John, just one second, I was just responding to uh, to uh, to Murray. I think that, I don't know that we need to be, uh, I mean, I'm not sure how specific we have to be in the zoning, but I think we have to have parameters that people have to work within, and I think the village needs to have a little vision about what it would like to see there. Um, you know, it doesn't mean that we have to be completely defined and hard-edged about it if somebody has, you know, something they'd like to do that's a little different, but, but if, but if, if we have a vision for that property, I think it needs to be, I think the zoning has to reflect that vision, and so if somebody, somebody who would like to build windmills doesn't come along and try to buy the property from Holtec, you know, and say, well, what do you mean, we can't do this? So, you know, I'm not sure that we have to define it in narrow parameters, but, you know, but I think we have to have a general sense of what we'd like to see there. Sorry, John, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I think you're, um, the way to, the way I would say to look at it is, ultimately the, the entity that would be developing the property would be investing a lot more money into their plans and their details.
Right.
So, it'll probably be 10 to 20 times the investment the village would be making in the, in the zoning's uh framework, right? So, they're going to go through the whole process. They're going to only do that once they have an option on the property and see the more, I think the more certainty and uh, uh, work, if you would, work that the village does in advance of the project, that, you know, the, the, the better position the village is then to actually respond to a proposal, right? So, right, so anyway, I, I've been, I'm not, I'm, I'm not thinking too differently in terms of what would be done. We would probably have some type of a uh flexibility within this uh zoning concept. Uh, but the uh, the applicant, if you would, um, you're, you're putting a lot, you're going to, it's going to be very difficult. I've seen these projects really get fall apart and not, not work out where the community hasn't done its homework and hasn't prepared for the, uh, any proposals. So, you'll, you'll uh, so I think it's a two-step process at least. Step one is get your zoning, your basic zoning in place, and step two, along the way, is coordinate with uh Holtec and ultimately whoever the, the ultimate uh acquisition partner that they find is, as the, as a property moves along, right? It's, it's life cycle, if you want.
Another question I have, maybe Nick could help me out with this. If I'm not mistaken, that property is only broken up into two separate properties. Uh, the, the main property and a southern property next to Lafarge or St. Gobin, whatever it is, that's under a separate property, but how, I'm not sure how we can change a zone in the section B that you're talking about, because that's not, that's not a separate property on the map right now. We would have to do, if we wanted to create a zone for that one section, we would have to subdivide that, and I don't believe that we're allowed to subdivide a property.
Yeah, we are, Sean. Uh, chapter 211, 211 on the zoning, article three, section 211, 8E, if I may read it to you.
Sure, I don't remember.
Where a district boundary line divides a lot of record held in one ownership at the time of adoption of said district line, the regulations for the less restricted portion of such lot shall apply to the remainder of said lot up to a distance of not more than 50 feet from the said district line. Uh, the gist of that is, there is wording in the zoning that refers to a parcel owned by one person, having, that the zoning line falls within the lot that's owned by one party. So, um, I, that's the only wording I could find to that effect, but, but I don't think there's any issue with that.
Well, I, what I'm, the point I'm trying to get to is, I, I think the owner has to petition us. I don't think we can arbitrarily, or it wouldn't be arbitrary on our part, but I could see how a property owner might determine it being arbitrary if we just decide to cut his property in half and say he, we have to use it as a different purpose, as a different zone. You know, I know, I know we've subdivided properties for people, but, and we've joined, we've changed lot lines, we've done a lot of things, but it's always been upon the petitioner or the owner to petition the village for that. I don't see, maybe Stephanie can help us, if, if it's legal for us to actually change the zone of somebody's property or part of a piece of property without their request. I just don't want to go down into a rabbit hole where we have all this legislation, then we have to subdivide and do all these different things and that we weren't allowed to do some things, you know?
Steph, are you still with us?
Sorry, go ahead.
Stephanie, if you want to reply, you're still muted.
Can you hear me? Are you talking to me?
No, we're talking to. Stephanie.
Okay.
Well, we can, you know, certainly confirm any, if there's any legal issues with that. I do not believe there are. Uh, there are definitely different parcels, um, you know, I mean, DL English divided the energy properties into four parcels, uh, each of which had different recommendations and, you know, um, certainly part, what they call parcel D is the nuclear portion, which would be the last parcel to be uh changed in any way, that'll take quite a while. Parcel B that we're talking about, the wooden parcel, is the, one of the parcels they say could possibly be developed prior to the decommissioning completion. Um, you know, and of course, there's questions to be answered on how to go about redeveloping if the decommissioning is still underway, but um, whatever we do may not happen overnight. Uh, but um, yeah, I mean, I, I understand your question, I don't know, is Stephanie with us?
Yeah, I, I just don't want to buy a product that we can't use.
Yep.
You know, I don't want to spend 25, 30, 40,000 dollars on a product that we find was not going to meet our needs and, or that we actually can't use. I hate just to waste time, you know? Waste time and money.
Yeah, okay, well, I think we've lost Stephanie, maybe temporarily, but um, but Sean, do you know anything about that?
Well, you're not, just first of all, I think uh you can apply zoning, ideally it's across a property boundary, but if you have a, a separate use, you can create a zoning line that doesn't match that property line, right? So, you're not subdividing anybody's property. And, and uh, look, you know, we'll look at any zoning, any property that you want us to, all right? So, if you want to add some properties and have us look and make zoning recommendations in other parts of the, you know, uh, property of the plant, we'd be, we'd be glad to do it. I, what I tried to do within, you know, uh, kind of this budget framework is try to get you a finished product for, you know, one, you know, important section, which I think would have some applicability as a guide for other, you know, for other um areas of the village, you know, along this, along this corridor, right? Some, you know, I thi, I think, you know, look, we're in a good position to help you if you'd like us to. Uh, I don't think, uh, with all due respect, I think our work is useful, valuable, and would be helpful to the village. Uh, I think we will be creating a lot of added value that really uh, right now is at a very constrained site in terms of the zoning that you have. Uh, I think we can do it pretty uh cost-effectively for you all. So, um, I would, I would, I would say this, uh, and why don't you all discuss it? I think, I think we've put together a, you know, a kind of a, my sense of how I would recommend you proceed, uh, try to do it um with my best judgment and experience, and I think the main thing that I'd like to get out of this is that, is we, if the village wants to engage us, that would be great, and to make sure that I ref, that our work reflects, you know, your, your concerns, your values and what you want us to achieve, and I know we can help you do that, because we've done it, uh, I've been doing it my whole career. So, uh, um, I think with that, if there's not any more questions, I'll probably sign off and let you all, you know, carry on with your meeting, and we could, you know, continue the conversation in the future.
Does anyone have any other questions for John? No? Thank you for joining us.
One general thing before you sign off, John, um, try not to keep it long, I just, should we, should the board decide to go ahead and hire you for this consultation, um, what would be the immediate, the next steps? Where, what are our first steps as we go ahead with this here?
Well, I think, I think I would just send you all a professional services agreement for you, uh, you know, our standard agreement for you to review and sign and attach this uh scope, and then we'd have a um, a project coordination meeting really, and a client meeting, it's kind of, maybe another, uh, maybe start off with another meeting with the board if you'd like, to just kind of clarify how we're doing our work and our scope, uh, and then combine that with a site visit and kind of get started on it, all right?
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Yeah, thank you, John.
All right, great.
Thank you, John, for joining us.
John, uh, in, in your experience in the last, let's say, 20 years, uh, on the riverfront property, I mean, I noticed for all the years I commuted down to New York, going along the Hudson River was all factories, some working, some decrepit. going along the Hudson River was all factories, some working, some decrepit, and they've all seemed to be replaced by residential and/or restaurants or a bar or something like that. Uh, do you have any comment on that?
In, in terms of, uh...
Is that, I mean, in other words, is, yeah, at one point, you know, our, our rivers were our highways, but they're not anymore, and that's why there was so much industrial done on the riverfronts. And riverfront property has, has escalated in price, but, and it's just by looking at things, I, I want your opinion on it. Is, is it not, is not true that most of the industrial along the riverfront has been replaced by residential?
Well, right, it's either go, well, depends on where you live and what your, uh, you know, kind of, uh, right, what your assets are and what the setting is, yes, it's about the industrials, you go up and down the river, is still vacant and dilapidated. Right, there's a lot of polluted sites on the river. Uh, but it's gone, uh, yeah, it's gone mostly residential, I think, you know, you could places like Tarrytown, where it has a lot of, uh, you know, transportation and, uh, uh, assets, train stations that are nearby, and they're gonna attract a different, certain higher level development, I think. Uh, Buchanan's property is quite beautiful, the, the property, and we're talking about north. It probably won't be, uh, developed as intensively as that, but that's okay. Right, uh, but it certainly, uh, would head in that direction, you know, industrial uses from power plants, you know, uh, still coming, yeah, they're, they're all, let me tell you this, the industrial, uh, development on the river, there's always gonna be somebody, at some point, big project, looking to land on the river. Many of them, I see them to be tremendously controversial, and not necessarily something that, uh, most communities would wanna see. Right? Ega Street today, a lot of it, if it wants to be on the river, it's gonna be, uh, pretty, pretty heavy. And, uh, right, it's gonna wanna use the river access for something, so. I think you've already had experience with that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we all, okay, I think, thank you, John, thank you for joining us tonight.
You're, you're very welcome. Thank you for having me. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, you too, thanks.
Bye-bye.
So, um, this is a big undertaking, so what, what's the board's thoughts? Are we looking at, at the whole property other than the decommissioned area, or do we just wanna focus on the northern section? What, what are the board's thoughts?
I, I think the most accessible one at this time, I think that would be the northern part. I mean, right now, we, we don't have access to any of them.
No, yeah, it's still in Holtech's name, so...
So, I, I mean, we, we should, uh, look at that. John brought up a point that he's seen a lot of things fail. Like, I, I hate to get into a situation where we put together a plan and we pay for this plan, and it sits for a long period of time, and it doesn't, there's no follow-through on it. So, uh, I know what we wanna see as a board here, we want, we wanna beautify Buchanan and, and, and make it, make it, you know, what we believe it could be, but I just hate to see it fail, like, I hate to see us waste this money and not get what we want. The objective is here to come up with a plan, but it, it could sit idle for years and, and, and not follow-through. You know?
So you're saying mostly that, like, you're concerned that, uh, Holtech won't, uh, have the property available, is that in that way?
You know better than me. I mean, I don't know, I don't communicate with Holtech, you do. I don't know what the accessibility to that property is gonna be, how long it's gonna be. You know, I just feel like it's a, uh, it's good to have an idea of a scope of work that we want as a village, that this is what we want there, so when a developer comes in, that he sees what we, you know, what we want, and we'll work together with him. It's great to have that going forward. But then you also have to get a developer to buy that idea. You know, and, you know, we can't, you can't push something down somebody's throat that, you know, if he's a developer, he's a developer. You know? I mean, the scope of work is great to have, but, you know, you gotta sell it, you gotta sell, it's gotta be, you know?
Yeah.
It's, it's our idea, we all have different ideas.
Yeah, of course.
Sorry, I, Anthony, I, I think, you know, it's a good point, but, um, you know, not, we don't know exactly how Holtech is going to be, but part of the memorandum of understanding that came out of that intervention includes a commitment, Holtech agreed to maintain an open dialogue regarding that property and potential future uses and potential sales of that property. So, you know, there's no guarantee that they're gonna be straightforward about everything, but in theory, when we have our monthly meetings with them, that could be one of the things that gets discussed. And I think that, um, it could sit for a while, that's, but, which is kind of, I just, my feeling, and I, I actually introduced proposed zoning changes almost two years ago now. I think my date on it was September nineteen, which is two, almost, you know, next, September is two years. And the proposal I made was because I thought that we should sorta, even if we don't get super-specific, that we should lay out a, a rough guideline as to what we'd like to see and what we wouldn't like to see, so that as people come courting Holtech's, thinking about what to do with that, they look at the zoning, they're gonna say, "Okay, what we wanna do kinda works within that, let's, let's go to the next step." Or they could say, "Well, you know, we wanna, uh, manufacture gas turbines, uh, and from what they've done here in their zoning, I don't think we should be pursuing this property," you know? So, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, lays out a template that might help steer it towards what we'd like to see there.
So your idea?
If somebody, it may, you know, it's hard to say with that, with that waste stores up there. It's hard to say if anybody's gonna wanna do anything over there for, for a handful of years, it's hard to say.
And that's, that's pretty much what my point is about, without saying it that way. I mean, you wanna set up parameters, but you're also setting up parameters of, uh, next to, uh, you know, a, a, a decommissioned nuclear facility. We don't know who's gonna wanna get involved with something like that.
We don't.
No, and, and it's a shot in the dark, but, you know, I, I, I believe setting up parameters is a good idea, it's something that we want to see there. Now, do, does Holtech have to agree with what we want, or do they have any play in that situation? Like, do they...
We should, we should have them involved in conversations.
If there's a, any zoning change requires a public hearing, they have a right to, uh, to, um, express whatever it is they'd like. You know, if they have an issue with it. I mean, but, um, if we leave it to Holtech, they might just wanna sell it to the highest bidder, no matter what they wanna do.
No, I don't, I'm saying we...
But the highest bidder is gonna wanna know that they can do what it is that they're, that they're envisioning.
Well, that goes back to my previous comment, Nick. I don't believe anybody could sell that little portion of land. I don't believe, I believe these, these, uh, these, uh, drawings that were done by D.L. English, they are not done by any specific property lines or survey lines. It's just an estimation of what they believe should be subdivided for development and the schedule for which that development should take place. So, I don't believe any owner can arbitrarily sell a portion of their property without have requesting a subdivision from the village Buchanan. And I don't believe the village can change the zoning arbitrarily for a portion of somebody's property unless it's requested to be subdivided by the owner. So...
We could, we, we, we could change the zoning and, and, you know, we'll have to have, uh, our attorney, uh, confirm that, we could change the zoning. The alternative is, the, the alternative is we start to get people coming, you know, you know, going up to Holtech and looking to do certain things that we don't want. I, I think that you guys are raising some good questions, but my feeling is if we don't, if we don't kind of take a little proactive step now, even if it's something that sits there for a few years, then we're gonna be more likely, we have a better chance of somebody coming that wants to put something there that we don't really want there, that doesn't maximize the use of that land for the public good, and, uh, and will have less of a case to steer it away from something that we really don't wanna see there. Uh, so, so I, I understand your points. I think the alternative is really risky, though, to not, to not, uh, change the zoning.
Can I just comment, but I, maybe if each one of us made up a list of things we don't want, we definitely don't want, and things that we would definitely like to see, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure most of us would agree on what we don't want, for the most part. And, uh, and at least we'd have a starting point. And the other, on the other side of things we would like to see there, I think we, for instance, I think we would all like to see some public space for access to the river, our parkland, if you wanna put it that way. And, and then the other, the other thing would be some, some sort of residential and/or commercial type of things. I mean, red, uh, commercial runs a long gamut of things from a factory to, uh, you know, let's say, uh, a high-tech building on the river, something like that, but I think if, instead of, we could go around and talk about this all night long.
Yeah.
One of us, we could put it on email, send it to Marcus, these are the things we don't want. Naturally, I think each one of us might forget something here or there, but if then we all see what we're going at, we, we don't need to sit around and talk all night. Uh, no, for instance, none of us wants a windmill plant. So, uh, that would be on the list of what we don't want.
Yeah. Rich, you're, 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 you know, absolutely right. And I, I, you know, truthfully, that's kind of where I was trying to, that's what I was trying to get to when I made up the zoning proposal for this.
I agree with you, yeah, yeah.
You know, I said, you know, just, as I, as I said then, and I say now, this was just to get the conversation started. Everybody's gotta kind of come up with that list, like you say, what do you, what do you want? What don't you want? But also, don't forget, we represent the public. So take a look at that LWRP survey, there's ninety-nine Buchanan responses under categories like, um, um, you know, in your view, what is the biggest opportunity to revitalize the waterfront of Buchanan? And then, another category, and with fifty, and it has fifty-two answers from, that are printed out in full. Conversely, what is the biggest concern or constraint that you see limiting the potential for the revitalization of that waterfront? And then there's fifty-four responses. Uh, this is just on the Buchanan section of the survey. And then there are, you, if you look at the LWRP's, LWRP survey pages...
Get to work at that, and, and...
Seventy-two to eighty-two.
Yeah.
Page seventy-two to eighty-two on the survey. Look at what people are saying, and absolutely what you're saying then is what we should do. Everybody should be able to, let's say, you know, we should be able to kind of get it to a point where we have a nice sense of what we'd like to see and would not like to see. We're probably, you know, can't agree a hundred percent. You know, but the survey's kind of funny, one person said, uh, you know, "It's a great place to meditate, don't develop it too much." And then the other person, the next person says, "I want an obstacle course on the water." So, you know, it's, you, you're gonna get varying opinions, big time.
Right.
Whether it's with the board or with the public, but it's worth looking at what those responses were.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
All right, so we'll, if no one else has any other comments or questions on this, we can discuss this further at the, at the, our workshop next week, and we can bring in that list of, of wants and do not want. And that's really, that's a good basis, the LWRP, uh, survey. They, like I said, they had some, some interesting concepts people had talked about, so...
Oh, some of it's funny, some of it's hysterical. But there's some good, there's good ideas, there's funny ideas, there's interesting ideas, runs a gamut. And people should go check out a few other, but, check out the, uh, not the new, uh, thing that they're doing in Sleepy Hollow, but where they did the waterfront in Tarrytown, there's some, uh, there's some, um, residential buildings and a couple of restaurants. They created a park with a beautiful outdoor, uh, spray fountain for kids, it's just, it's a beautiful space there. You know, so, you know, when you get the chance, you should check out some of the other things that have been done along the river.
Marcus, can you afford me the results to the RW, uh, LWRP survey? Because I did what...
It's on the website, Sean. You go to our website, there's a link to LWRP.
Okay, all right, I'll check it out.
And the Buchanan section is pages seventy-two to eighty-two. Not that some of the other sections aren't interesting, but page seventy-two to eighty-two is the Buchanan part.
I did attend a meeting that we had in March in the village, and one of the main things, and he had said it again today, was that prior to doing any zoning changes, that we should have a master plan for the site. So, that's what he had mentioned in March, and that's what he had mentioned again today. So... And even a breakout team had said the same thing, and the breakout teams couldn't come up with a...
Yeah.
Synopsis.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, all right. So, some good conversations, some good questions, and some questions for Stephanie. Some legal questions that we need answered to. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. On a motion to close the meeting?
On whom?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Oops, second, sorry, whoops.
Aye.
Second, aye, 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 good. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Good night, everyone.
Night.